Good evening, Wareham, and welcome to the Select Board meeting of August 20th, 2024. May I have a roll call, please?
Tonight present is Ms. Whiteside, myself, Jared Chadwick, Ms. Corbett, Ms. Quirk, Mr. Bessie, Mr. Sullivan, and absent tonight is Mr. Bowen.
Thank you. Pledge of allegiance, let's see. Derek, your turn.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Residents' comments, is there anyone who would like to address this board? If so, on a non-agenda item, please raise your hand. I see nobody. We will go to announcements, let's see, Ms. Corbett.
I was at the Chalk Festival last Saturday, it was a good time, beautiful, beautiful chalk artwork, and I brought with me my materials to encourage people to volunteer for town boards and committees, so I'm positive we're going to see a big uptake in volunteers for our various boards and committees, and I wanted to make note that the main library is closed and all library activity is moved to the spinny until further notice, they had a mold problem that they're still looking into.
That it?
That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Quirk. Ms. Quirk, announcements?
Just quickly, the solar siting or renewable siting bill did not pass.
Your transmission is really bad. You're breaking up. And you appear to be frozen. Let me go to Mr. Bessie, see if you can figure out a different way. Mr. Bessie, I'm sorry.
I have nothing this evening, thank you.
Ms. Quirk? Ms. Quirk? Okay, we'll come back to her, Mr. Chadwick.
The only thing I have tonight is Saturday from 2:00 to 5:00 is the back-to-school stroll. It will be held on Merchant's Way, and it is where all the children, all the way up to high school, can come down, grab some school supplies, all courtesy of us and WRA. Kind of like trick-or-treating, they get to go to all the businesses on Main Street and grab school supplies. It's also kind of a good thing that we can have, you know, promote the businesses on Main Street as well, and if anyone out there is interested, any other businesses interested in joining, we'd love to have you, so give us a call, let us know, thank you.
Thank you, being this, us being Mr. Sullivan, 291-3100, extension, whatever.
3110.
3110.
Looks like it's supposed to be an amazing day weather-wise, so.
Oh, good.
Okay, it's a beauty too.
Awesome. Ms. Quirk, I'm going to go back to you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
Is that better?
Yeah.
Okay, just quickly, renewable energy facility siting bill did not pass. Governors talked about bringing the legislators back to work on it, that hasn't happened as far as I can tell, so we are functioning under old law, which, as you all know, is quite pro-solar, but without the heavy-handed local elimination of local support, and that was being discussed by the legislature, so still watch and wait opportunities to have some info. Extremely difficult, and that's it.
Okay, thank you. I have nothing to add this evening, so we will move forward. On the agenda we have with us, Scott Sobey, would you raise your hand, please? And I don't see Wanda Savory, but if she appears, we'll let her in as well. We have two interviews and one appointment. Mr. Sobey has applied to be a sewer commissioner, we will be interviewing him tonight, the sewer commissioners will be interviewing him on Thursday night, and then we will have a joint meeting next Tuesday to vote to see whether we will appoint him as a sewer commissioner until the election in May of 2025. It is a joint appointment under the charter. So, Mr. Sobey, would you identify yourself for the record and speak briefly about your interest in becoming a sewer commissioner, please?
My name is Scott Sobey. I'm presently on the Conservation Commission as an Associate Commissioner. So I was approached to be, to fill a vacant position on the sewer commission. It wasn't something I had sought. It's obviously not the sexiest position in town government, at least on its surface, although most of us are contributors to the system. But having taken a tour of the facility and spoken with two of the sewer commissioners and also with Scott Cryhensel, who is the director out there, I, my interest has grown in the position. There are things that overlap with my expertise, I don't have any engineering background to speak of. My area of microbiology does not overlap perfectly with what's happening in the tanks and containment facilities, clarifiers and so on, excuse me. But I have a pretty good idea of what's happening there, and my intention would be to fill the position until the next election in May. So I'm interested in helping out where I can, I have some preliminary thoughts and ideas, I'm sure they're naive and ill-informed, but at least they're my first impression.
Okay, just before I ask my board members if they have any questions of you, the sewer commissioners are meeting on 1:00 this Thursday, not the evening meeting, so those of you who are interested in watching it, they also have a workshop going on as well. Do any of my board members have any questions of Mr. Sobey, please raise your hand? Wow. No? Okay, we will not be making any recommendation until next Tuesday, Mr. Sobey, I think that's been explained to you, I know that you toured the plant, I know that you met with Mr. Gubert the Chair of the sewer commissioners, so you have done your homework and done your legwork, and I appreciate that, thank you. So unless you have any questions of us, you can go back to looking at the sunset.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thanks so much.
I will say that I was once corrected, because I talked about, you know, not having done so well in chemistry during high school, and when talking about the sewer plant, they said biology was much more important, so I think you're in a good place.
Great, thank you so much. I'm going to skip over Wanda Savory, because she's not here, if she shows up, we will take her up for the appointment, she's new appointment to the recycling committee, she was on the committee years ago and chose to not re-up, but she's interested in re-upping now. Licenses and permits, Mr. Chadwick, may I have a motion, please, on the renewal?
Yes, I move for the renewal application on San Sef 3194 Cranberry Highway, wearing masks weekly and Sunday entertainment, pending Health Department and Fire District inspection approvals.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the renewal, any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I will go for a roll call vote, Ms. Corbett?
Hi.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Ms. Quirk?
Hi.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is so. And we'll go quickly to number the application of Concall, which is, you and I all know as the Narrows, an application for the change of hours, may I have a motion on that one, please?
Yes, I move to approve the application of Concall, Inc., DBA Narrow Crossing Restaurant, 1 Narrows Road, wearing mask, 02571 liquor license, change of hours, close Mondays and Tuesdays.
Is there a second? Motion made and seconded. When we asked the owner to please put that request in, because they've been closed every Monday and Tuesday, really all year long, and so it is appropriate to amend the license if you're not open all of the time that you say you have asked for. Is there any further comment on the motion to approve? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote, Ms. Corbett?
Hi.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Ms. Quirk?
Hi.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is so, we did get a second on that, right?
Yes.
Yes, it was me.
Thank you. If you are Wanda Savory, could you raise your hand? I will go on to Mr. Chadwick, you have something to read.
I do. The National Suicide Prevention Month, September 2024 proclamation for the town of Wareham, Massachusetts, whereas suicide is the 11th leading cause of all deaths in the US and the third leading cause of death among individuals between the ages of 15 and 24, whereas in the US, one person dies by suicide every 14 minutes, whereas it is estimated that 5 million people in the US are survivors of suicide loss, whereas overall suicide rate in our country in 2022 estimated 50,000 people dying by suicide, whereas suicide is a public health concern and affects many in our community, whereas the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention and the Plymouth County Suicide Prevention Coalition promote suicide prevention and awareness in our communities both urge that we, as a community, align with the national strategy for suicide prevention at a local level, including community-based efforts that support, one, effective, broad-based collaborative and sustainable suicide prevention partnership, two, investing in upstream comprehensive community-based suicide prevention, three, reducing access to lethal means among people at risk of suicide, four, integrating suicide prevention into the culture of the workplace and into other community settings, five, building and sustaining suicide prevention infrastructure at the local town and state level, whereas a great many suicides are preventable, now, therefore, we, the Wareham Select Board, do hereby recognize September as Suicide Prevention Month and designate September 10th, 2024, as Suicide Prevention Day in the town of Wareham, Massachusetts, in witness whereof, we have hereon to set our hands this 20th day of August 2024, signed the Wareham Select Board.
Thank you. I'm sure that Mr. Chadwick may have more experience with people who have attempted suicide than the rest of us in terms of being an EMT, it is very clearly a very serious problem, and I think it's appropriate that we recognize not only the month, but the day as well.
I've lost my best friend when I was in high school to it, and I've lost a couple friends to it since then.
Yes, it's a shame. Is there someone here to present information about Cranberry Manor Phase 2, if you are here, could you raise your hand, please?
Please, Madam Chair. I do, typo.
I'm sorry.
On this, we need to correct the typo on proclamation, Sarah Corbett's name is spelled here.
Oh, yeah, we'll fix that, thank you. Is there anyone here on behalf of the Cranberry Manor? Not yet, okay. Discussion and possible vote to revise the host community agreement for coastal cultivars, which you have, it has been reviewed by council as well as Mr. Sullivan, and unless you have questions about it, it would be appropriate to make a motion to approve. Mr. Sullivan, do you choose to say anything about this? You're muted.
These have become rather pro-form, especially with what the Canvas Control Commission has done, so.
Okay, so it would be appropriate to have a motion to authorize you to sign?
Correct.
Mr. Chadwick?
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought I saw Ron raising his hand. I move to renew the host community agreement of Coastal Cultivars, Inc. and the town of Wareham.
To authorize the town administrator to, can you say, you're authorizing the town administrator to?
I move to authorize the town administrator to renew the host community agreement, Coastal Cultivars, Inc. and the town of Wareham.
There's a second to that motion?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to authorize the town administrator to sign on behalf of the town, is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote, Ms. Corbett?
Hi.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Ms. Quirk?
Hi.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, it is so.
My apologies, there was a kid outside my door for some weird reason.
I'm expecting Mr. Titlebaum to speak to us about the discussion about the release of the performance bond, Mr. Titlebaum, if you're here, could you raise your hand, because I don't see your name? Noah, would you let that iPhone person in, because that is Mr. Titlebaum, I'm presuming? I'm going to ask that you identify yourself at the record, sir? We can't hear you, you're muted. Still can't hear you, you're muted. Still can't hear you. While we're waiting to see if he'll dial in, room 27, progress for redoing all of the audiovisual equipment, whatever the new terminology is, is well underway, it will be finished tomorrow, and the room will be ready to be used with all of the new equipment on Wednesday. Mr. Titlebaum, are you there?
Yes.
Okay, could you identify yourself at the record, sir?
Hi, I'm Peter Titlebaum, I'm the attorney for Dos Amigos Realty LLC, which is coming before you pursuant to a planning board vote last week to refer the performance secured by lender agreement that was forwarded to you last week, and what this is, is a form of bond relating to a two-lot subdivision in West Wareham. The bond amount is actually set by the planning board's engineering consultant, they go out and take a look and put a value on the improvements that are needed to bring utilities and roadways to the future lot owners, and this is done so that there's protection for those people when they buy lots, and somebody who is developing a subdivision goes, long and short of it.
Thank you, has the agreement been reviewed as to form by Mr. Bowen?
Yes, and your board should have received his email in that regard last week.
I believe we did, yeah. So we are not precluding the action of the planning board, they still will have to okay this, but we have to okay it as well.
On that, Madam Chair?
Yeah.
Once this, you know, it's sort of a ping-pong here at this point, the planning board first approves the amount of the bond, which they did last week, and refers it to you for your approval on behalf of the town as a whole, and then what if, once you're done with that, then it goes back to the planning board for execution and recording.
Thank you. Are there any questions of Mr. Titlebaum about what it is that we're doing, or being asked to do, Ms. Corbett, go ahead.
So you came in and out a little bit, Peter, when you were talking about what it is we're doing, so we are approving a money amount to guarantee that the bond?
Well, effectively, this is, there's three ways you can provide authority in Massachusetts, when you've got covenants in a subdivision that require you to do certain work, like lay out the road, or install, you know, sewer lines, things like that, in this case, there's no sewer, but basically a form of protection for people who buy the lots, somebody has to get the work done, the bond serves as money that's in play, so that the town can come in effectively and grab that money. Depending how many subdivisions do fail, it's something that certainly.
Did that answer your question, Ms. Corbett?
I think so, yes.
Okay, anyone else have any questions of Mr. Titlebaum? Hearing none, I will accept a motion, Mr. Chadwick?
I move to.
Yeah, go ahead.
Move to authorize the release of the performance secured by lender agreement for Dos Amigos LLC.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to authorize the release, is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote, Ms. Corbett?
Hi.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Ms. Quirk?
Hi.
And Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes. I'm going to note for the record, I believe, Ms. Quirk, you may have been on the planning board when this first became, came before it.
Yes.
Could you simply state for the record that you were involved, or you were at the meetings where this was discussed, please?
I was at the meetings where this was discussed, I think that at the last meeting, which I attended as liaison, there was a robust discussion of this process and some obligations that the owner of the property has acknowledged, but I did not vote on this matter.
Thank you. Thank you very much, okay, we're going to, I'm going to ask if anyone is here on behalf of Cranberry Manor? Okay, we have in front of us a lot of information from them, what they're really looking for is a letter of support for Phase 2, this is something that we actually saw several months ago, the packet that you received shows the concept of additional senior housing behind what is already apartments, if you're comfortable with moving forward to approve the letter, there's a standard format letter, if not, I will try and make sure that they come to the next meeting.
Have our two new members seen their presentation from the last time?
No, I did look through the documents, though.
But I have not heard a presentation, and would be very interested in reactions of the.
In that case, I'd recommend holding off until if Ms. Quirk and Ms. Corbett agree.
Okay.
I like that, thank you, Jared.
Okay, we'll hold that, thank you, no vote is necessary then. Ms. Corbett, discussion regarding the October visit from the, excuse me, former mayor of Wareham, the United Kingdom, do you have anything to report?
Yep, Ron and I have been trying to sync up our schedule with Claire's, and I believe we're hoping to meet with her this Monday, but I did run into her at the Wareham Land Trust annual meeting, and I told her about Jared's idea of possible reception at the onset base center, which she really liked that idea, but right now they have no budget, so that would be a little tricky, she also liked the idea of having a reception at the Town Hall Auditorium, but when she talked about the schedule, the former mayor is coming in Thursday, so Claire was looking at Friday evening for the reception or whatever it is we're going to do, so, but Town Hall is closed on Fridays, I was wondering, Mr. Sullivan, would it be possible to open Town Hall just for that event in the auditorium on a Friday evening?
Yeah, we still have staff working on Fridays and not showing Town Hall, so if it's Friday evening, sure, that's fine, are you, when you're talking about event, you're speaking about a public event?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, that just gets a little trickier with the building, just making sure the rest of the offices are closed and cordoning off the rest of the area of the Town Hall, but, you know, if, we also, when were you thinking for this?
I can't remember, it's mid-October, I believe.
You'd have, we'd have to be certain that the work being done to it is, is over by then, is there a potential alternate location you?
Oh, this is not set in stone at all, just, we, Claire assumed that we couldn't do it, but I wanted to see if it was possible, so it sounds like it might be possible.
Yeah, you know, it's, you know, as they said when the Celtics won the championship, anything's possible, but, you know, it's how they work, I just don't want to, let me, I want to speak to a few people, make sure any of the work that's being done would be done by then, I don't want to give you a false positive.
All right, well, I'll follow up with you if that is something that Claire wants to pursue.
Okay.
Thank you. The Buzzes Bay Coalition presentation, I sent you an email regarding that, they are not ready to come before us, so that's off the agenda, unfortunately, we do, or whatever, we do have 48-hour business, and I will now read it into the record, because I didn't have time to send it to you, this is something that requires a vote from us to authorize the posting of this, it's a warrant, Commonwealth of Massachusetts William Francis Galvin, Secretary of the Commonwealth, warrant for the 2024 state primary to the constables of the city, town of Wareham, Wareham, greetings, in the name of the Commonwealth, you are hereby required to notify and warn the inhabitants of said city or town who are qualified to vote in primaries to vote at precincts 1 through 6, Memorial Town Hall, 54 Marion Road, precinct 1 and 2, Hammond School, 13 Highland Avenue, precinct 2 and 3, Redmond Hall, 745 Main Street, Wareham, precinct 4 and 5, on Tuesday, the 3rd day of September 2024, from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM for the following purpose, to cast their votes in the state primaries for the candidates of political parties for the following offices, Senator in Congress, Representative in Congress for the 9th District, Counselor for the 1st District, Senator in General Court, 3rd Bristol and Plymouth District, Representative in General Court, 2nd Plymouth District, Clerk of Courts, Plymouth County, Register of Deeds, Plymouth District, County Commissioners in Plymouth County, hereof feel not to make return of this warrant with your doings thereon at the time and place of said voting, given under our hands, this would be 20th day of August 2024, the selectment of Wareham, we would all sign it, and it will be posted in four post offices, the Council and AG Multi-Service Center, the library, the 7-Eleven store at 3 Barker Road, Town Bulletin Board, and the Town of Wareham webpage, and the constable will serve that before the 27th, and that's the reason that we have to act on it tonight, because it has to be posted by the 27th of this month, may I have a motion to post said warrant?
I move to post said warrant.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to post the warrant, is there any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote, Ms. Quirk?
Hi.
Ms. Corbett?
Hi.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is so, if we can get three signatures before Thursday noon time, that would be great, because the constable will be serving it before, before the 27th, oh, okay. Town administrators report. Please.
All right, thank you, I have a few things here, first, I want to thank Assistant Town Minister Doreen Allen England for her fine work while I was away on vacation, and as you know, she always does a great job, and she's kind enough to tell me that wearing both hats kills her, and she would never want my job for the, for all the money, so it makes me feel good about that, or maybe not, but I really appreciate all her hard work while I'm away. But I really appreciate all her hard work while I'm away. We posted for the Town Clerk position and received applications, and we narrowed them down to the top three. In the top three upon review, current interim clerk Lisa Johnson was within there. LJ has done a tremendous job, as you know. She stepped in during the presidential primary at a really tough time to just step into it. And I think she's done a fabulous job. I've received compliments on how she's handled the office. And as such, under Section 4-2 of the Charter, I've appointed her to the position of Town Clerk. So no longer an interim, so she would be the Town Clerk. We've spoken about the Emergency Management Director position. And just to let you know, I sent down an email earlier that you will be. I'm switching from screen to screen, so I apologize. Yeah, so the assignment, I'm happy to announce that Caleb LaRue, who is a member of the Wareham Police Department, has been assigned the position of the Emergency Management Director. Mr. LaRue has a strong background in coordinating with the intermunicipal agencies. He's training. He did the local craze training for the Town Hall, which is civilian response to an active shooter. He's done that. He's been leading with other members of the department and members of the fire departments, training over at the Adica School. So I'm really happy that he put himself forward for that and think it's going to be an excellent addition. Has it been carefully prepared this month? But I think it's very appropriate to have an emergency management director assigned. Very happy for Mr. LaRue on that. The financial management review, I've reached out to the Division of Local Services for the financial review as requested by the Select Board and Finance Committee, and we are in queue. They anticipate the start date to be late winter. So I don't think that's. Late winter.
Thank you.
So I don't think that's outside the realm of what we were thinking. So there's some confusion that's hit our, especially in Special Services Department. Governor Healy, in part of our broad housing bill, had put in an accessory dwelling units legislation that, you know, she had signed. That, the time of taking effect of that is February 2025. We have people saying it's as by right now and trying to move forward. That is not, in fact, not the case. I do recommend a short time that we work on something for town meeting for our bylaws. You can require it to be, you know, compliant with Title V. You can allow it so that's not short-term rentals. Remember, this is supposed to help with our housing crisis, and it is not supposed to be meant to be a investor portfolios, increasing those. You can also allow, make sure that the principal unit is owner occupied. You know, that's some of the things. So in other words, again, so you don't have somebody buying up houses across town trying to make them into short-term rentals.
Which they're doing in Atlanta, Georgia.
Yeah, you know, so. We know one of the hardships our residents face is being in the Boston housing market for affordability, which on average is an increase of about $800 to $900 per month in some of the surrounding communities. Which is really, what that's done is created artificially high rentals. So folks that normally maybe could have in another community rented cannot in ours. And that's one of the things I find very frustrating. So, you know, I want to make sure that if we're going to do the accessory dwelling units, they're there for the purposes. And they're as by right up to or under 900 square feet. I think that's something we, you know, we've been receiving emails from the Special Services Department from some of the others, so it's something we need to move on pretty quickly. Some of the surrounding communities have some good bylaws that they've put together, so. I think we're going to get those together and see if we can't, short time, but see what we can put together to make sure that these are done properly. And it's where it's intended, in fact, to help our residents that can't rent otherwise.
Right.
So.
Anything else?
No, and we had a lovely time away, so thank you all. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Liaison initiative reports, boards' comments, Ms. Corbett?
She said nothing.
Nothing. Okay, Mr. Bessie?
I'm nothing.
Okay, Ms. Quirk?
Nothing.
Mr. Chadwick?
The only thing I have to say is I'm working on a really exciting project with Wareham High School, but I'm not allowed to say anything yet. So stay tuned, and I'm overly, overly excited about this to the point where I feel like I just got a bright red fire truck for Christmas. So stay tuned, everyone.
And I have nothing. Thank you. May I have a motion on the minutes for August 6, please?
Yes, I move to approve the Select Board meeting minutes of August 6, 2024.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Corbett?
Hi.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Ms. Quirk?
Hi.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, they are approved. Is there any further business to come before this board? Hearing none, I will accept the Slaven motion, as it's come to be known.
I move to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
Oh, motion made and seconded to adjourn. It is not debatable. I will go for a roll call vote, please. Ms. Corbett?
Hi.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Awesome. Ms. Quirk?
Hi.
Okay, Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is so. 7:37. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. Remind you that we are meeting on Tuesday, the 27th. It is remote, and we will see you then. Thank you very much. Enjoy the rest of the evening.
Good night.